Get settled in Jackie so you can jump up again for the pledge. Been about this for years. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education of Washington County to order. We do have a quorum this evening. I'd like to welcome Jack Crumpie, who is a fifth grade student at Fountaindale Elementary School. And Jack's going to come forward to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and the moment of silence. Jack?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jack, you have some people here with you this evening that you would like to introduce to us.
Yes ma'am. So here I have today are my parents, Amy and Max Crumpie, and my principal, Dr. Williamson.
Welcome. Thank you for being here. Jack, you go to Fountaindale?
Yes ma'am.
Could you tell us a little bit about your studies at Fountaindale?
Well, my studies at Fountaindale, we have different encores such as music, PE, dance, and art, and media. And we also, in my class, I have two different classes. I switch in between them. And we also have a magnet program.
And at Fountaindale, do you... Did you want to add something?
I have the best teacher in all of Washington County.
Of course you do, Jack. And is there a favorite subject that you have?
Yes, social studies.
Oh, social studies. Uh huh. Do you have a particular area of social studies that you like?
Reading.
Okay, okay. What's the best book you've ever read?
I'm not sure. I've had multiple favorites.
Oh really? That's a good answer. That's a good answer. And when you're not at school, when you're not at Fountaindale, what are some things you like to do?
Well, I play soccer. And at the Donut Drop, I hang out with Mr. Bigford.
Oh, you do? At the Donut Drop? Okay. All right, well that's good to know.
I think he probably hangs out with you.
Colleagues, do you have anything you'd like to ask of Jack?
What's your position in soccer? You're a forward like your dad?
Um, no. I mainly play defense.
Defense. You think Dad knows how to play defense?
Yes.
Oh, he does? Okay.
Good answer, Jack. Good answer. Well, Jack, we certainly thank you for being here this evening for leading us in the pledge. And good luck to you, your studies at Fountaindale. And you're going to go one to Northern Middle?
Um, we moved recently to Smithburg over the summer, so I'm still deciding between...
So Smithburg, nice to see a soccer player coming their way. Uh huh. All right. Well, good luck to you then when you hit middle school, Jack. Thanks so much. And you and your parents are welcome to stay for the entire meeting, or if you need to go. That's good too. You're able to do that, all right? Whatever's best for you. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to have a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any discussion of the agenda? If not, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Six in the student member concurs. Have approval of the agenda. And it brings us to approval of our minutes.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the work session minutes dated Tuesday, November 7th, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Okay, all those approving those minutes, please raise your hand. Okay.
Mrs. Williams, I also move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, November 7th, 2017.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer. Any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? All those in favor of approval of those minutes? Okay, again, six to zero.
Mrs. Williams, on the final move for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, November 7th, 2017.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? All those approving those minutes? Okay, thank you. Six to zero, and the student member concurs. At this time, we have the superintendent's report, and we will be recognizing student athletes this evening.
Thank you, President Williams. Tonight, we're very excited to recognize students. And tonight, it's for athletic accomplishments. It involves a great number of young ladies. This evening, we're going to be honoring Boonsboro Girls' Cross Country Team, I believe for the third year in a row, has won state championships, and we are very, very proud of them. And Smithburg Volleyball has won for the fourth year in a row. I think seven or eight times here in recent years, and we're very excited for them. So what we're going to do is ask Eric Michael, our supervisor of athletics, to come forward. We're going to recognize the Boonsboro Cross Country Team first. They'll come across. They'll get their medal from the board members, shake the board members' hands. We'll ask you to kind of assemble over here where Mr. Michael is. And then you're going to come back in front of the board when everyone's been announced. And we'll take a picture of the group, and then we'll call forward the volleyball team. So with that, board members, if you could make your way down front.
Okay, members of the cross-country team. Cameron Harper. Kayla Ofton Brink. McKenna Luzier. Maggie Luzier. Ellie Bear. Jenna Duke. Hannah Kirby. Maeve Dever. Cassidy Stupp. Abby Gaver. Rachel Pearson. Elizabeth Co. Francisco. Okay, assistant coach Sean Cutzal. Assistant coach Erin Kelly. And head coach Becky Walter. While they're going through the line, just a few highlights of this team. Doctors, Dr. Michael said they are a very accomplished team. Third year in a row, they've been here with us. This year was the first year of several of our teams running in, being in the Central Maryland Conference. The girls were the Gambrels Division Finalists. They're also Washington County Champions this year. They were the 1A West Region Finalists. And as we said, they were the 1A State Champions. This is third straight year for this team, winning the championship in 1A. Ninth overall, which is quite a feat in, as we look at state championships. Also academic, they're very good scholars academically. The team had a GPA of 4.12 as a team GPA. Okay, Smithburg Volleyball, if you guys want to, or gals want to come up front? Okay, we do have some missing tonight. We're going to read all the names of the other players. So first up, we have Olivia Witt. Next, we have Katie McCracken. Morgan Brink. Lauren Daniels. McKenna Clevenger. Sidney Scott. Sidney Hammond. Chloe Huntsberry. Erica Martin. Hannah Lund. Haley Daniels. Morgan Domenico. Elizabeth Lund. Taylor Hammond. And Emily Houdak. Assistant coaches, James and Beth Domenico, they're not here tonight. Rose Powell, assistant coach. And head coach Rachel Brashear. So here's some season highlights with this group. As I said, we started playing the Central Maryland Conference this year. The play is division-wise. So Smithburg won the Gambrels Division this year, which put them in the conference championship against the Spire's Division Championship, which actually happened to be North High. They also won that. So they were the overall CMC Conference Champions initial for Washington County. They're the 1A West Champions, and then the 1A State Champions. This is, as Dr. Michael said, this is their fourth straight championship. Their eighth championship in the last nine years. And with the championship this year, they move into second place overall in Maryland state history with 13 total championships in volleyball. Also, Coach Brashear, she's in some rare air at this point because now with her championship this year, it's her eighth, which moves her into a tie with the most titles for volleyball coach in the state of Maryland history. And these girls also are getting it done in the classroom. They have a team GPA of 3.78. Okay. And before both teams leave, I do want to, this is maybe one that not a whole lot of people realize. The state of MPSSAA does a sportsmanship award at every state championship. So talking about character. This year, we were fortunate that Boonsboro won for cross-country the sportsmanship award. And Smithburg also won for volleyball. And just real quick, our vision statement for athletics kind of mirrors what our vision statement is for the Washington County Public Schools. It says, "Building a community that inspires excellence in character, athletics, and academic achievement." Board members, Dr. Michael, I think that these two teams embody that vision statement. I think the most proud I am is not only their accomplishment on the field and in the classroom, but the character, good quality people. And with that, congratulations on a great season.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. At this time, we'll move forward to public comment. We have no one signed up in advance for public comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to come forward? Okay, we have no old business this evening, so we'll move to new business. Our first item of new business is the consideration of the first quarter FY 2018 budget adjustments. Good evening, Mr. Brandon Burke.
Good evening, President Williams, Vice President Staffer, and board members. You have in your packet the first quarter budget adjustments. This was discussed and gone over with the finance committee one week ago tonight, and one week ago this morning on November 14th. The adjustments that you see before you are those necessary to recognize and pay for the negotiated salary improvements for teachers and ESP staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon Burke. Is there a motion?
Move to accept the budget adjustments, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Redner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Questions or discussion? No questions for Mr. Brandon Burke? Okay, then we'll move to the question. Move for approval of the proposed FY 2018 first quarter budget adjustment as presented. All those in favor? Thank you. Six to zero. Motion carries. Student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item of new business, excuse me, is consideration of the District Committee on Assessment Appointments. Dr. Bishop?
Mr. Malott, hello. Good evening, board members, superintendent. This evening, we are seeking the board's approval of the District Assessment Committee. I have presenting with me tonight Carlos Malott. Mr. Becker extends his apologies, but he had a change of plans and wasn't able to be here this evening.
All right, good evening. I wanted to come and give you a little bit of background on this legislation. The legislation began after New York enacted a 2% testing cap in 2014. Maryland educators then began a three-year plan to pass similar legislation in our state. In order to find out exactly how much mandated testing there is each year, we passed a law in 2015, creating the Commission to Review Maryland's Use of Assessments and Pupils. in 2015, creating the Commission to Review Maryland's Use of Assessments in Public Schools. In 2015-2016, educators launched a public awareness campaign to explain how over-testing takes away valuable instruction time and narrows the curriculum. When the Commission finished its study of how much testing goes on in Maryland schools, MSEA teamed up with Delegate Ledke and Senator Roger Mano to introduce legislation to cap federal, state, and district mandated testing at 2% of the school year. The bill passed the House of Delegates, but had some hiccups in the Senate. In 2016, the Commission released its recommendation that every school system create a District Committee on Assessments, including classroom teachers, test coordinators, and support professionals, to identify redundant or unnecessary testing and make cuts to local assessment mandates. Eventually, the House and Senate agreed to compromise version, to a compromise version of the bill that would increase the cap slightly to 2.2% of the school year. But in, in this bipartisan effort, the More Learning Less Testing Act will eliminate 730 hours across 18 districts, and will allow educators to do what they love, and that is to teach children. So we're excited about this.
The definition of assessment for this committee and as part of this bill is defined as federal, state, or locally mandated tests, and those tests need to be ones which measure a student's academic readiness, learning progress, or skill acquisition. And the definition also includes what is not considered an assessment for the committee. Advanced placement, international baccalaureate, and SAT are not included in the definition of assessment. Teacher-developed quizzes or tests are also not included, and sampling tests that are only administered to a small group of students would not be included as part of the assessments that the committee would review.
You can see on the slide our timeline, and I have to say, it has been an absolute pleasure to collaborate with the district and to work hand-in-hand with Dr. Bishop and Mrs. Margovich, and I'm happy to say that we've already met twice and, and are really ahead of schedule. In terms of the timeline, we still have a few things left, and we have some time to complete these, these tasks. But as I stated, we're, we are, we are comfortable where we are, and we're comfortable with the pace that we're, that we're engaged in to move forward.
The purpose of the Assessment Committee is to really agree on the amount of time that students will spend on assessments, to review our locally mandated assessments using a rubric, which we have been already discussing and agreeing on, and to then make recommendations in the areas of time required to administer each assessment, duplicity of the assessments, purpose of the assessments, the value of the feedback to students and to teachers, and the timeliness of receiving results from the assessments.
In closed session, Dr. Bishop shared with you the, the exact names of, of the committee members, and we are, we believe that we have a, a great composition, a great variety of, of people from our community and, and from our school system to provide good representation on this Assessment Committee.
So at this time, we will take any questions and ask for your approval for the committee.
Is there a motion?
I move. Madam President, I move to approve the committee members nominated for the District Committee on Assessment.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer. Are there any questions for Mr. Millot or Dr. Bishop? Mr. Staffer?
Uh, I keep seeing, I mean, I know what a rubric is. What, what will your rubric for this consist of?
Well, we've reviewed a suggestion from MSD-E, and then we received rubrics from two or three other counties that we looked at, and we actually agreed simple was better. So we're looking at a checklist that if you look at the criteria on the purpose of the committee, that it is a checklist of evidence of each one of those. So we're trying to keep that as simple for our use as possible.
Can I say something else? I, I'd just like to say, I, I think it's great that WCTA and Central Office, WCPA, PS staffers are working together on this. That can only be good for the, for the county.
Absolutely.
To have collaboration instead of disagreement.
And for the kids.
Any other questions? Any discussion, further discussion? Okay, so the motion is to approve the committee members nominated for the District Committee on Assessment. Raise your hand if you're in approval. Okay, six to zero. Student member concurs. Our next item of new business is the adoption of our Board's 2018 Legislative Program, the approval of the Legislative Response Team members, and our legislative representative to the 2018 Maryland Legislative Session. At this time, I seek a motion to approve the appointment of Mrs. Cade as our Board of Education's Legislative Representative.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's unanimous, six votes, and the student member concurs. I seek a motion to approve the appointments of myself as President, Stan Staffer as Vice President, and Linda Murray to serve as our Legislative Response Team for FY 2018. Is that you, Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Any questions, discussion? Mrs. Fisher?
Um, I don't have, um, any problems with the, the slate or anything, but I believe when this was first introduced, we were told that the President and Vice President were automatically members. I don't believe the Vice President is automatically a member. Checking the, the. Doesn't that list the Vice President? Now, I have no problem with the Vice President being on there, I just wanted to point out that it doesn't list it on the policy.
Okay, I, I don't have the policy in front of me.
I didn't bring it with me tonight either, but I, right after we went through this a couple of weeks ago, I checked it out.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve the appointments to the Legislative Response Team. All those in favor? Okay, six, unanimous, and the student member concurs. Okay, at this time, we'll take a look at the Legislative Program for the 2018 Legislative Looking first at our core values as discussed in our work session. Would you like me to read those aloud, or is everyone okay? We have those in our packet.
You know, I think it'd be nice to read just the titles for the audience.
Our core values, A, adequate and equitable local and state funding. B, local control. And C, mandate should be limited and fully funded by the states, by the state, excuse We have a motion for approval of our core values.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer. All those in favor of adopting those as our core values? Okay, it's unanimous. Student member concurs. Let's go to our 2018 Legislative Watch List. The items on that watch list, the first one is to contest any further increases in the transfer of pension costs. The second, free appropriate education, the burden of proof. And the third is Public School Labor Relations Board. Is there a motion to approve our Legislative Watch List?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Any discussion of those items on the watch list?
I would just say that this is not a complete list of the items that'll probably be on the watch list. It'll be interesting to see what the minds of our state legislators, legislators think of to come up with for the educational system in this state.
All of those who are in favor of adopting that as our watch list, those items as our watch list, raise your right hand. Six to zero. Student member concurs. And next would be our local initiatives. In work session, we discussed several initiatives. The first being to support the Urban Improvement Project Partnership, which is comprised of the Washington County delegation, the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, the City of Hagerstown, the Washington County Board of Education, the University System of Maryland at Hagerstown, and the Maryland Theater in their efforts to obtain state funding. Is there a motion to approve that initiative?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of that initiative? Thank you. Six to zero. Student member concurs. The second is to amend the Student Safety and Support Act, known as the Reportable Offense Law. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of that initiative as part of our legislative program? Thank you. Six to zero. Student member concurs. Next is the repeal of a special law governing the term of office for the Superintendent of Washington County Public Schools. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. And discussion? No discussion? I think we thoroughly discussed these initiatives in work session. All those in favor of the motion to accept this as part of our legislative program? Okay, four in favor, there's opposed. Okay, four to two. The motion carries. I'm sorry, abstention? Next initiative under consideration is to amend the Fairness and Negotiations Act to reduce the cost of the impasse statewide init, this is a statewide initiative, and to allow for an orderly budget planning process, which would be a local initiative. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. All those in favor of accepting this into our legislative program? Six to zero. Student member concurs. Next is the repeal of public local law advisory school design review committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Discussion?
Madam President, I'm not going to support this, the next three. We met with the county commissioners, there wasn't much support that I could sense during that meeting, and I think without their support, I just don't feel it's appropriate to move forward these.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Anyone else? We'll move to the vote. Those in favor of adding this initiative to our legislative program? Okay, five, all those opposed. Okay, five to one. The motion carries. Did you concur with us? Thank you, and the student member concurs with the majority. Next initiative, an annual increase in the maintenance of effort based upon the Consumer Price Index.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Discussion?
Well, my philosophy on this is, you know, I don't know that it's gonna pass, but I don't think it hurts to ask. I really don't believe we can continue with maintenance of effort funding, and I think one of the demands that I personally had was that our own budget here at the Board of Education had to be examined line by line to make sure that we've got the money going where it's, we, it should go, and that we're not under-budgeting or over-budgeting certain areas and so forth. And it's my understanding that the Superintendent and his staff are doing a line-by-line examination of the budget, and it's because of that examination that I think it's time to ask for something to come out where we receive more money. We, we just, it doesn't matter if enrollment goes down or not, other things happen. Fact is, costs keep going up, certain costs over which we have no control, and we certainly need a little bit more money to operate. And the other thing we're gonna need more money for is for teacher increases in pay, ESP increases in pay, increases in pay for A&amp;S employees, and so forth. You just can't keep doing that off maintenance of effort budgets. We're in competition with other counties, other states, and something has to be done. I'm not so sure this will pass. We don't know how the legislation will be written up, but it doesn't hurt to ask.
Anyone else? If they recall the question, all those in favor of adding this to our legislative program? May I say that again? Four, and there's opposed. Okay, two in opposition. Okay, and the final initiative under consideration this evening is automated speed enforcement, the dedication of funds to be used for funding our school resource officers. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer. All those in favor? I skipped the discussion, I'm so sorry. We'll go back. Anyone like to speak to this? Mr. Staffer?
I support this because I understand that Sheriff Molandor is in agreement with this, doesn't mind the revenue going to this, but it's the day we live in, we need school resource officers. When I went to school with Fred Flintstone and others, we didn't need school resource officers, but we do now, and again, we can't keep funding all these things off maintenance of effort budgets. That's, that's my personal opinion.
Anyone else?
I do.
And I might add, I've been caught by a speed camera, so I've paid the $40 before, so I know what it's like.
Mr. Gessford?
I just want to say, I'm not for speed cameras, so I would not be able to support this. And the reason I don't believe in speed cameras is because, number one, the revenue's gonna continue to go down, so you're never gonna have that guarantee. I'm not so sure with everything that the Sheriff's Department is asking for, there's enough support for that to begin with. So I know the county commissioners had some questions about this. I don't support speed cameras, so I will not be able to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Anyone else like to speak? Mrs. Fisher?
I just say that this is one of several items that commissioners used to pay for, that they have withdrawn. I believe we now have adopted a $6 million addition to our budget to cover the thing, the nurses, resource officers, crossing guards, and I'm missing one.
Buses. School buses.
School buses, right. And so I think we need to try, just like with the, the other legislation that Mr. Staffer referred to, that you don't know until you try, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. All right, call for the vote. All those in favor of adding this initiative? All those in favor of adding this initiative to our legislative program? Five, and the student member confirms, motion carries. Mr. Gessford? In a po---
Against.
--position. Thank you. Okay. I think that pretty much covers that item. Helped anything out? I think I've gotten everything. Our next item on the agenda. It's the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Williams. Tonight, we're excited to bring to the board's attention a new Math Tech book series that we have made available to our staff. We have Michelle Harmon, our supervisor of science and mathematics, Nicole Marshall, and Amy Siler here tonight to give us an update on that resource for teachers and students.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. As stated, I'm Michelle Harmon, and I joined Washington County July 1. This is Amy Siler, Nicole Marshall. We're excited to have this opportunity to share with you the planning and implementation and give you an update on Discovery Education Math Tech Book. This was approved in June of 2017, and we began the implementation in the summer, July, and are continuing that implementation and professional development. We would like to extend our gratitude to Washington County Public Schools, members of the Board of Education, administrators, teachers, and any other entities that have helped support the implementation of this primary resource for our teachers and students. If you look at the product implementation, as stated, it was in June of 2017 that it was approved for purchase and implemented in the summer with a total of 4,378 middle school math licenses purchased for all students, grade six through eight, who are in our mathematics classes. That also includes 2,150 licenses that were purchased for Algebra I in grade eight and also at the high school level. And why was Math Tech Book selected? One of the primary reasons for teacher selection of this product was its alignment with the Maryland College and Career Ready standards, as well as our essential curriculum here in Washington County. Additionally, it builds conceptual knowledge of mathematics from informal understanding to a formal understanding of the key concepts. Additionally, it allows for optimal differentiation. It provides read-aloud text for students who are struggling readers. We can adjust Lexile reading levels for delivery of student materials. We have accommodations for language, Spanish. There are opportunities for remediation and also enrichment. It can be downloaded on every device for every student, so even if they don't have internet within their home, they will have access to the resources. Teachers can also deliver any of these resources by assigning them through Google Classroom if they are choosing to implement Google Classroom as their classroom management system. And in the classroom, it can be used from the front of a classroom as a teacher presenting whole class. It can be used at stations where a student group could collaborate. It could also be used one-on-one with devices, so that every student is working individually, which allows for a lot of differentiation for student learners. And teachers can push out certain assigned tasks that may be really delivered to a particular student to work on, to build skills in mathematics as appropriate to that learner's skill level. And I think one of the other really important things that I thought about later is that unlike a textbook, it can be updated constantly, and those updates are pushed out regularly from Discovery Education and any other resource that you would have that's electronic. A lot of them are updating and fixing errors or anything else on the fly, and that's nice as opposed to a textbook that you might have for an extended period of time, which does not have any updates to the hard textbook. Just a quick look at the design overview. I don't know how familiar you are with the product, but just to refresh your memory or provide information for anyone who may not have seen this. Whenever you go into-- this is grade six mathematics. You can see there's a visual overview. There are 13 units in this particular grade six. There's a table of contents, so a teacher can look through the table of contents and look for relevant material. And you can also look by standard. So if a teacher is searching for a particular resource related to a standard of instruction, they can go directly to that standard and pick something that may be engaging for the student or build the student's skill set. And one of the first components, we're looking at unit nine, and this is about relationships in math between variables. And everything is linked to an engagement piece. In this case, it's the county fair. And every student can, if they can't identify with the county fair, can certainly identify with amusements and amusement park kinds of environments. So we're looking at mathematical relationships through that context to connect students to the mathematics and give the math meaning. As you dive further in-- oh, the picture didn't come up. Five investigations are available, all linked to that same theme. Teachers could select particular investigations for a student and assign them, different investigations for different students. Some are hands-on, some would require materials and preparation, and I'll speak to that in a little bit, and some would be just interactive. Also, any student can access any of these materials at any time, so if they would like to extend their own knowledge or practice at home or explore these materials further, they may do so, even if it's not assigned. Two of the key-- Two of the key components are, in the practice, are coaching and playing. In the coaching section, students would engage in park-like questions that have all of the tech-enhanced features with which our students are familiar, such as you would find in park assessments and other modern-day assessments, MISA and our Prevy Learn. It provides feedback, support, and hints as the student works through at their own pace, gives them second chances to try again. And they can also look at the play section, which promotes the same kind of learning, same kinds of questions, but through a game platform. Then students can extend their learning further by applying what they have learned about key concepts to new situations. In this case, there are three different application scenarios. One is planning a road trip and how you would look at variables within that scenario, buying candy and money for an event, and team statistics. So the application, again, takes the concepts and applies them to a new situation, also appealing to student interest and things that students would be familiar with in everyday life, to give meaning to the mathematics. And just like a textbook, the tech book provides a teacher lesson plan. This is a detailed learning progression that provides the teacher with timing for all of the activities, all of the standards and alignment to Common Core or Maryland College and Career Ready standards. It also has all the materials you would need for any of the activities and other features such as answer keys, common misconceptions that students might have, guiding questions, and additional resources that would be, again, much like a teacher edition textbook. When we've looked at our usage, please bear in mind that school was in session after Labor Day, so we're really quite enthusiastic about what we see in terms of usage. The top chart is usage for teachers, and the bottom chart, usage for students. Active users are any individual who has logged on as a unique user. And then the usage is how many clicks on what Discovery Education terms assets within the platform. And I'll show you what that means on the next page. Assets are grouped into different categories. So if you look here at this chart, you can see that students and teachers are accessing some of the key components more than any of the others, and that would be the interactive text, the glossary terms, the textbook courses themselves, and interactives that are in the viewing and interacting sections. The lesson plans under teach would be primarily accessed by teachers, but you do see some student usage in the resources and content collections and activities. The assignments, assessments, and quizzes can be selected and pushed out through Google Classroom. We also have other county assessments that have already been designed, so I think that's why we see a lower number there. We've attempted to gather some feedback already regarding student and parent usage of impressions of tech books, as well as administrators and teachers. If you look at this chart, some of the things that stand out to us are that this is challenging, it makes you think. And these are just very, very brief, based on direct quotes that I have in here, if you would like to hear any direct quotes. It's real world, it's hands-on, it's interactive, it makes sense. That, that's great. There are also some challenges, certainly, as with the implementation of any new product. And some of those challenges we're already addressing and have addressed, but there are some glitches with editing student work, some loss of student work. Some of this is not tech book, it's really learning to use the product. And again, we're only entering our third month of usage. Teacher feedback, again, I would point out that it promotes explaining reasoning and justification. It's engaging and interactive. It challenges students, it's rigorous. It allows for productive struggle, allowing students to make sense of the mathematics for themselves and have ownership of their learning. Additionally, you can see challenges here, some of which are the same as the students are experiencing, some glitches, some interface, some functionality. And really, a lot of this, again, we are addressing through our professional development. So this is an ongoing process, and we're all learning as we continue our implementation and use in the most appropriate fashion. This is some of the professional development that we have provided, beginning in July with middle school, getting started with Math Tech Book. And then in August, we did another session of getting started with Math Tech Book for high school and also implementation strategies in a wider group of middle school. Building a culture of inquiry was for administrators, to give them an overall view of how teachers could be using this resource in their classroom, what they should see students doing in classrooms. Then we will be using formative assessment tomorrow to begin to adapt instruction based upon that formative instruction, I mean, formative assessment. And then throughout December, January, February, we are working with schools to design customized small group coaching, where teams will be in schools assisting teachers in the specific needs that they have. Excuse me. As we're looking ahead in our future efforts, some of the needs for teachers, as we've heard, are continued professional development, so we are continuing our plans. And that would be just functional usage, as well as changing the way that we teach math in more of an inquiry-based environment. We are conducting classroom visits, co-teaching, modeling. We are also facilitating department lead teacher meetings and leadership council to assist all of our administrators in understanding the direction of mathematics instruction, one-on-one coaching where appropriate, and ongoing troubleshooting, where our team is constantly fielding any questions that people have and trying to assist them in the most quick manner. And we're also looking at evaluating the impact of this resource. As with any expenditure of this magnitude, we really want to make sure that it's being used appropriately and that it does support our curriculum as we intended it to. So we have software that we're using to do some analytics. We have Prevy Learn diagnostics and interims, as well as park data that we'll look at, and teacher and student evaluations, feedback, surveys. Discovery Education also provides us with a quarterly analysis and guides us in looking at what are the parts of the resource that maybe we could provide more professional development for and give our teachers more support with. And then each administrator at the school level, middle and high, as well as our team here, has access at an administrative level. So I, any of us can go in and look at the school usage, individual student/teacher usage, and any other data. And I will tell you that we're excited that in November so far, we see that usage looks like it will be somewhere between the October and September numbers, just projecting and predicting from what we see. So in conclusion, I thank you again for your support of this product. I think that it provides, we think that it provides just what we need to engage students in meaningful mathematical learning. And that's not just memorizing, that's learning the content through applying it to practical situations. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, I was coughing. The board members have any questions, the team would sort of like to answer those. It's been a long time since we've had a math book series in middle school in algebra. I don't know if anybody knows how many years ago the last purchase was made, but it's been, I think, quite a while at this point. And this is a primary resource used in middle school and in algebra in high school.
This does require internet connection if you use it at night, right?
As stated, it can be downloaded, so a teacher can download any and all of the materials, and the entire platform can be downloaded to your device. So a student could take their iPad home or anywhere and have access to the resources. If you were using it in the classroom live, there could be a connectivity issue if you hadn't downloaded the materials, but that seems to be rare thus far.
Well, I hope that this, this new math series adds to one thing. I'm an avid tutor at Williamsport High School, achievement via individual determination. And I go in when the students do their presentations, points of concern. And every time I go in, there's never one with English or social studies, it's always Algebra I. And one of the things, when we go through the things, is I always ask them, well, what's the application of this in the real world? And the answer I get, and this is not a reflection, I don't think, on the teachers at Williamsport or anything, but the answer I always get is, well, I don't know, it's just something they got to teach us. So I noticed on the one thing there where it had the objectives, the sample, the objectives and stuff, that it said, how can you write and use equations in two variables to represent relationships in real-world situations? So I hope that does carry over, because I keep telling them, there is an application. Not having a great math background is hard for me to come up with examples, but there's got to be a reason why we teach two-variable equations, I mean.
And if I may, the, just the difference with the Math Tech Book between a textbook, like an old textbook that many of us would have used, when you look through a textbook, it starts with an example, five problems like it, another example, five kind of what I'm going to call naked math problems, just like it. And typically, your word problems or your application problems in your kind of traditional textbook were the last five to 10 problems, five pages into that particular section. And what we're excited about with the tech book, with the Discovery Education, is the very first thing students see is a real-world application, every single lesson, every single time. So our hope is that over time, we can allow students to see the real-world application daily.
Could I see a sample of this sometime? I mean, I'm just curious.
Absolutely.
Anything to increase my knowledge about all these things?
Certainly, most certainly.
I actually have it. I think I still have it on my iPad. I got a chance to look at it over the summer. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. I love it. I'm a person that's algebraic challenged. I'm not good when it comes to algebra and above. And I loved it, it was very interactive, vocabulary, it explained it, the videos, all the different things that help you achieve your goal of learning. It was very interesting, and I happened to have my grandson with me at the time, and he loved it, too. We were really having a good time with it, so I think it's a great way to teach kids math.
Thank you for that supportive comment. And I would add that it appeals to so many different types of learners because of all those stimulating different ways to engage in the mathematics.
Absolutely, yes.
I was thinking there was hints in the book for parents to help their children. Is that true or not?
I forgot to mention, for the middle school in--
I forgot to mention, for the middle school in particular, there is a parent letter that can be sent out at the beginning of the unit that explains to the parent in user-friendly language what's going to be covered and what kinds of things they could do to support and assist their child in that unit of instruction. And I did note that some parents did mention specifically that they enjoyed the parent letter, that it helped them help their child.
How would this be measured successfully wise within, because it's a six-year period, you don't want to go into the fifth year and go, you know, it just didn't work. How do we, and when do we, look at that?
Well, certainly one way would be park results will be part of the outcome of it. I think the teacher feedback so far has been pretty positive. You know, it's certainly been, anytime we adopt a new textbook series, there's always a little reluctance to give up the old piece and move on to the new textbook and some things like that. So I think we'll see through teacher feedback, through student success, and then certainly through park results, if we're aligned with state standards and what we're trying to accomplish.
I mean, one thing that I hear a lot of is, you know, this preparation every year of a new initiative, you know? So I would think that, and I wasn't a teacher, I'm sitting among a bunch of them up here, so I would think that if I would learn to teach this class, I'd like to be able to continue that a few years, because I'm going to get better as a teacher teaching that, because I'm going to learn, I guess, little secrets to it. So, you know, a lot of times, when you keep changing things, teachers tend to kind of slow down, because they got to kind of go back and go, okay, I got to learn this over again. I hope that, you know, when you do something like this for six years, that we are making sure that we're giving that teacher the opportunity through personal development and teaching this, that they can get better at it, and then hopefully you'll see the results. But I don't want to wait till, you know, it's too late and you go like, oh, we should have done something differently, so.
I'm optimistic we're going to see results this year, but I'll let the team answer. One of the advantages of it being tech-based is, unlike our other books, we bought a book and we keep it for seven, eight, nine, 10 years. I mean, this would happen to social studies all the time. The book's outdated, depending on whether it's, you know, a long time ago history or current event type things. If there are glitches in the software, it can be updated. If there's a mistake in the book, you know, you kind of had to, you might get an addendum or something like that to the book, but you wouldn't get it updated. If there's new research or new problems or something like that, the advantage of it being tech-based, we've already purchased what will be the updates to the book, as I understand it. So, and if anybody else want to respond to Mr. Gessford's question about how we're going to measure results or how we'll see this being used by teachers, and it won't be a new initiative every year for them.
I think in addition to the park test, we are, we've adopted this year, we're looking at interim testing, so we'll be able to see student progress throughout the year, not just even waiting for the end of the year for the big, high-stakes exam. In addition to that, like Dr. Michael said, the regular updates and then the feedback that we're able to get, and I know Amy and I specifically really want to support teachers in that, but using Discovery Ed as a primary resource and really supporting teachers in making that shift for teaching instructional, the way we need to be teaching math so that students really understand. So I'm going to say it, like the five Es that we would talk about in science, this supports that opportunity for students to be, before they even start doing those procedural pieces that we all had to memorize, they're engaging in some real, oops, real-world phenomena, I'm excited about it. And then the mathematics is what supports that conversation. And so that's really what the shift that needs to be made, and Discovery Ed supports that wholeheartedly. And so that is where Amy and I see ourselves supporting teachers, and Discovery Ed is a primary resource that supports that. And then the interims, park, the analytic software that we have, that will also be gauges to see how well and what we need to do in addition to providing supports for teachers for that.
So would that add a lot more testing to that, or is it just something that will be pulled off of the results that you'll be able to find?
Would what add a lot more testing?
Well, for your math, I mean, you're saying you're going to be testing.
No. In my mind, this supports more formative assessment and actually assessing where, like some of the programs here, it provides instant feedback to students. And so teachers can look and see the entire class, or if they're doing small groups, they can see exactly what students answered and be able to pinpoint specific details, so that we're kind of catching it real time, instead of waiting for those traditional summative tests. I'm not saying summative tests are, you know, gone by the wayside, but the whole intention is to be able to continually catch and make sense of, and catch and make sense of, and roll through for understanding, so that students are able to transfer their knowledge versus just answer questions.
Sounds good.
No further questions. We appreciate the time to share a little bit about the Math Tech Book. I think you can see the team's excited about it, and I think it's our teachers and the students become more and more comfortable with it. I think it's going to be an exciting resource to have, and a valuable resource to have for Washington County Public Schools. So, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you again.
The other comment I'd have tonight would be, I know we're not at the end of our meeting, but it's in my comment time, but to wish staff and students and our community a happy Thanksgiving, and hope everybody takes a few minutes on Thanksgiving Day in particular to count their blessings. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Move to personnel action, Dr. Bishop.
Good evening, Dr. Michael, Mrs. Williams, Mr. Stauffer, and board members. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you. Is there a motion? You're moving for acceptance of the personnel actions discussed in closed session. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Any discussion in the motion? All those in favor of accepting the personnel actions? It's unanimous. Mission carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Reports to the board. Time we'll have our committee reports. Would you like to begin down there, please, Mrs. Murray?
Curriculum and instruction will meet on Tuesday, November 28th, at 10:30 a.m. in the Board of Education conference room.
Thank you. Mr. Gessford?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
Policy committee has not met since our last board meeting, but we will be meeting on November 29th at 9:15.
Thank you. Mr. Ridenhour?
I'll be your report. We will not be meeting until after the holiday season.
Miscellaneous business to consideration of future agenda items. There is a list we have provided. Have an update, December 5th, of the Diversity Ad Hoc Committee. And we have some things happening in January, update on the planetarium, quarterly healthcare update. There are some that go on into spring and July. If you have any suggestion for agenda items, please let Dr. Michael, Mr. Stauffer, or me know of those. And that brings us to board member comments. Mr. Ridenhour, would you like to begin?
Sure. This past Saturday, I was privileged to be at the MAVE retreat. Several things that will be in the MAVE minutes later. In the morning, we talked about the roles and responsibilities of members, an overview of the mission, vision, and core values, the strategic plan, and the structure of MAVE. The afternoon, the Phase Two organizational review was discussed along with the strategic work plan for the upcoming year and focus areas in 2017, 2018. That will be on the MAVE website at some point.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Mrs. Fisher?
I'll just echo what Dr. Michael did earlier, and I hope that everyone has a good Thanksgiving and takes time to reflect and be thankful for all the good things that we have, so.
Thank you. Mr. Gessford?
Yes, quite a few things to be thankful for, but one thing that board-related them thankful for is all the employees that we were able to recognize the other evening for their service to the school system. It was great to see everybody out there and be supportive of them for the ones who had five years, all the way up to the ones that had 45 years. So congratulations to all of our staff, even if it's 17 years. We're very thankful for all that you do for our students here in Washington County. Thank you.
Mr. Stauffer?
Mrs. Fisher's already said about Thanksgiving, and Mr. Gessford's already said about the award ceremony for the employees and so forth, so I did owe those remarks.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
I'd like to say I attended the We the People District Six congressional hearings on November 14th. The five high schools that participated were Williamsport, North High, South High, Boonsborough, and Smithsburg. And I am just in awe of the knowledge that these 10th graders have of our constitution and how it applies to the real world today. I was very impressed.
Thank you. Mr. Diallo?
Nothing at this time.
I'd wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And we'll adjourn the meeting.